So we do a quorum.
Yes.
Yeah, we had, we had a city council go to a work session last night to go till about nine and Kerian stuck for the whole thing.
Wow.
I don't know if I would be.
You know, it's always amazing to get through the first honorariums and that and the audience is just going right there.
City council go to number session last night to go till. And Kerian stuck.
All right. I'm going to call the September eleventh twenty twenty four meeting of the Lacey Planning Commission to order. We do have a quorum present, Tony Moore is remote and we've got a couple of members that are excused. Before I get to the land acknowledgement, I do want to acknowledge that September eleventh is a somber day in the United States. Sites on our soil were brutally attacked. And there were a lot of victims and their families have been profoundly affected. In addition to that, our culture and society in the United States have never really been the same. And I just wanted to acknowledge that today. I didn't feel like we could meet publicly without saying that. All right, Elliot, please read the land acknowledgement.
We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Niskowee Indian Tribe and Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you. All right, we would look, I would look for a motion on the approval of the agenda.
So.
Eddie and then Spencer. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from last meeting? And I would entertain a motion on those.
Two minutes as printed.
Second.
That was Spencer and then Elliot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Thank you. How many members of the public here?
No members of the public in the building and we didn't have anybody that registered beforehand to give online public comments. So at this point, I think we can move along.
Okay. Do you, do any commission members have reports tonight? Okay.
It's like Kerian does.
Oh, Kerian. Hi.
Hi, sorry to have to zoom in from soccer practice. Sad time of year. But yeah, I, I was really grateful to be able to see the city council in action in person last night. There's so much amazing things that are happening in Lacey. They were talking about Greg Cuyo Park and all the wonderful things that are really going to, you know, make this city a great place for, for people that live here and attract people that want to also come to, to the city. So it was a wonderful experience to be able to see what's going on with city council and and hear all, all those different updates. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, any department report tonight?
Nothing from the board.
Nice. We don't have a public hearing. New business advisory board handbook update. And we've got Shannon, Alyssa, Brandy.
Great. We'll take a couple of chairs around.
It's not good. Yeah.
And this document is only a hundred and sixty-two pages long. I don't anticipate we'll be here beyond midnight, but.
I hope we will definitely be out of here for this presentation within an hour. But if you all have questions, we're happy to answer them. Um, Erin, I don't know if you want us to drive.
You can drive. I think that'll be the simplest thing to do there. Fantastic.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I am Shannon Kelly Fong and I'm the Assistant City Manager for the City of Lacey. And I'm joined here by our fantastic clerks office and I'll just have them briefly introduce themselves.
Good evening, Alyssa Fontaine, City Clerk.
Brandy Legomina, Deputy City Clerk.
Paul White, Deputy City Clerk.
And we're really excited to be here tonight to talk about the updates to the Advisory Board Handbook. And we thought as part of that, we would also go over a couple of other items that are included in the handbook as well as some best practices for meetings. So we do have a couple of presentations here, so bear with us as we shift between all of them. All right. So included in your packet is the updated Advisory Board Handbook, Standard Protocol and Ground Rules. And it looks like we've already got some questions in there that we need to take another look at. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. A couple of just key takeaways. We're going to go over quite a bit of information tonight, but if you walk away with a couple of things, here are some things we're recommending. So number one, communicate with your staff liaisons as well as our clerks office. If you ever have questions about any of the stuff that we're going to go over, we are happy to be resources. Please feel free to reach out. I'm sure, you know, Ryan and Erin are more than welcome to take your questions. Quorums are key. So I'm thankful that we've got a great quorum here. The business that you all are doing can't happen unless we have a quorum. And so you'll hear us mention quorums, quorums, quorums several times through tonight's presentations. And that's because they're so important. And there is a lot of work that goes on to get to this point and with staff. And so just recognizing that in order to do business, we need to have a quorum. Three, don't create unnecessary public records. We will highlight public records. I know some of your public records training is about to come up. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then four, Robert's rules are helpful. They're here to help. They're not to scare. So we'll be going over some best practices with Robert's rules. For the content tonight, we are going to overview the updated Advisory Board Handbook. And I'm specifically going to focus on public comments and the public hearing updates. And then I'll hand it over to the clerks office and they're going to talk about public meetings and public records and then Robert's rules and meeting best practices. So just to set some background on why we started looking at this, at the city. So previously, a couple of months ago, our Commission on Equity, which is another advisory board to the city council, was Zoom bombed. And some vile hateful speech happened at that meeting. And so this really gave us a moment of, let's take a look at our public comments. And then also the tools that we provide our advisory board members, our presiding officers, as well as our city council to handle situations like this. Because unfortunately, they are happening all over the country, all over Washington. And we want people to be as prepared with information on how to handle these types of circumstances as they come up. So what I'm showing you is just a couple of examples, unfortunately, of where this has been happening around Washington State. So we started to take a look at public comments and public hearing within the council policies and procedures. And then that also led us to take a look at the Advisory Board Handbook and how we could have similar processes that the council has for our advisory boards. So what we did with the Advisory Board Handbook was we streamlined content. I don't know if you all recall reading it previously, but it was a lot lengthier than what it is now. We really wanted to make it really accessible for people to pick up. Maybe somebody who's interested in advisory board now can read through it in a couple of minutes rather than maybe thirty minutes. We wanted the information to be as current as possible. Maybe we still have some work to do. But we had boards that their previous names were mentioned in it. It hadn't really been updated for a couple of years. And so we just wanted to make sure it was as accurate as possible. And then finally, we added a new section in the policy handbook, a couple of new sections actually, on public comment, public hearing policies, as well as meeting disruptions. And then we also provided new tools in the appendices for advisory board members, which includes a public comment script that the presiding officer could use if they wanted to use it to introduce public comments, as well as some additional notes on how to respond to problematic public comments. And then finally, a script if there was a disruption of a meeting. And please feel free to jump in if you have any questions throughout the presentation. As part of reviewing both the city council policies as well as the advisory board handbook, we had a lot of check-ins with our Commission on Equity. We also checked in with our youth council and our staff liaisons for advisory boards and then had multiple check-ins with city council to make sure that we were getting the public comment and public hearing policy to the spot that they wanted it at. It was adopted by the Lacey City Council on August sixth by resolution. And you can see here, resolution number one, one, five, one is what updated the handbook for advisory boards. So in the advisory board itself, you will see a table of contents. It's got some sections that we're going to go over with some materials that are pertinent to this board, including information on Open Public Meetings Act, Public Records Act, Government Training, which we're going to go over here at a high level tonight. And it also talks about now public comment, public hearing, and meeting disruptions. So briefly, just on the public comment updates really quickly. What was adopted by the council supersedes any other policies that were adopted by advisory boards and creates a consistent way for public comment across all advisory boards. So if you're a community member and you come in to provide public comment for whether it's Planning Commission or Commission on Equity or even City Council, the rules are now all the same across the board. And what that means is that the council and advisory boards will accept in-person public comments, starting with individuals who signed up on the sign-in sheet. And provided there is time, the presiding officer can invite anybody who didn't sign up on the sign-in sheet to provide a public comment in person. The boards will also accept public comment remotely. However, individuals who want to provide public comment remotely have to register two hours in advance. And the city has set this up. We have technologies for our Zoom entrance where if you want to attend a meeting, you've got the option of registering for public comments. And they've got to do this two hours in advance. And that way we can get the information to our staff liaisons. They can get it to the presiding officer to make sure that we have everybody who had signed up in advance. And then also they can provide written public comment and this needs to be submitted two hours in advance. So that remote and written public comment are similar. The presiding officer has the ability to determine the order in which they want to go through public comment, whether it's starting with those who signed up remotely or starting with individuals here in person. Public comment is limited to three minutes. And we're working with our staff liaisons on a tool so that it's very visible about public comment and how much time you have left if you're providing it in person or remotely. And that public comment periods are limited to a total of thirty minutes. However, this can be extended or you can add an additional public comment period at the end of the meeting with the consent of the body. We're also asking that all public commenters provide their name, their city of residence or connection to the city. They don't have to provide both. It's an or. And then finally, just a brief, maybe one sentence statement of what their topic is. And additionally, we do have some prohibited items, which we'll take a look at as we go through the manual itself. Just want to be really clear though. So in part of the research through this project, we wanted to make a distinction that we're not abridging anybody's freedom of speech. Obviously, the U.S. Constitution has a prohibition of that. And so we had to keep that in consideration as we are going through this process. We walked through what was hate speech and in the United States, hate speech is protected by the First Amendment. And so we wanted to provide tools for our advisory boards to be able to react in case there was comments that did have hate speech included in that. And so you'll see that in one of the appendices, some more information on how you could handle those situations. Hate crime offenses, though, are in distinction from hate speech. And the important thing with this is that threatening words not constitute a hate crime offense if it's apparent the victim, that the person does not have the ability to carry out that threat. So there needs to be a combination of the threatening words and then also the ability to carry out that threat. Public comment is a limited public forum for freedom of speech purposes, which means that again, we can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. And it has to be a reasonable and content neutral regulation. And so that's where we're coming with creating these standardized rules for public comment and also for public hearings. And that all public comment must be received at all regular meetings of the governing body where final action is taken. So I'm going to exit out of this and Erin, if you don't mind hitting escape on the computer. Oh, and I guess I can do that. Yeah. And we'll just go really quickly through some of the additions and certainly let me know if you have any questions here. Thank you. All right. So just really quickly, we updated the forward, made that significantly smaller, talked a little bit about the city being a code city. Kept in all of the information right now on the mission statement and the vision theme since none of that changed. Also kept in all of the organizational values and the mottos. Really shortened the advisory board segment here just to be more succinct and to the point. And then updated all of this information on the various advisory boards. For example, at the Parks Culture and Recreation Board, which had still the Parks Board of Commissioners name on it.
Yeah, you know, I was on city council when we implemented these advisory board manuals in the council manual. We just didn't know what to include. So we just kind of threw the kitchen sink at it and said, yeah, that'll cover it.
Yeah, yeah. And it was a great base, right? A great foundation. And, you know, we've been able to add a few more things and you just streamline a couple of other things.
I appreciate it.
All right. So I'm going to skip down here just to public comments. Just to go over that in a little bit more detail and show you where you can find it. And then again, all of the information and the further presentations will go into a bit more detail of some of these sections. But starting here in section two oh eight, you've got public comment. And it again provides that ways in which you can provide public comment, the in-person, the remote, written. Also that there are rules for public comments and again, about the order, what needs to be provided, how much time an individual has, the total time allotted for public comment. And then also what's prohibited. So things that are prohibited are things that have a specified public hearing because you would want the testimony to be reflected in the hearing rather than the public comments. Electronic and physical presentations, recordings, or props. You can have banners and signs, but they need to be on the back of the wall so they don't disrupt the work of the body. Disruptions or interruptions, including clapping, cheering, booing, or interrupting speakers. And again, specific threats of violence targeted against a person or group with a reasonable fear of harm to person or property or sexual harassment. Public hearing, the rules are very similar. There are some distinctions, though, with public comments. And those are, number one, there isn't a time cap. So you still have three minutes to provide your testimony, but there isn't a thirty-minute window like there is with public comments. Additionally, for information that needs to be provided, because it is a public hearing and presumably they're providing some comments on that particular item, you just need to provide your name and city of residence or connection to the city. All right, same prohibitions. And then, like I mentioned, we added a section in here on meeting disruptions and what a body could do if there was a major disruption at any of the boards. And then finally, going down to the appendices, you've got all of the adopted materials from the various advisory boards. And then at the very end, we have provided a public comment script. Again, this is just a tool that could be used by the presiding officer to start public comments. And also a just cheat on if you do have those problematic public comments of what you could say.
I just noticed on appendix seven, the numbered items start with number four.
I, I wrote that down in my notes too. And I was reading through it. I was like, restart numbering on that. So yes, thank you. Yeah, like I said, we're still working out a couple of things. And when you add documents together, you can do some strange formatting. So, you know, one of the things we just wanted to make note of, of obviously, we want individuals to come in and provide their public comment. And sometimes those public comments can be filled with hate speech. And so while allowing them to continue with their allotted three minutes times, there are an op- there is an opportunity at the end to say, you know, these comments were highly problematic and aren't in alignment with the city's values and that the city is working to eradicate all forms of racism and discrimination. So there's some language in there if that was to occur or anything similar to that. There's also examples, though, of times where you maybe just need to correct some misinformation that could be provided. And so again, letting the individual speak for their totality of three minutes and then offering a correction. So you could say something like, you know, in the past comments, Alyssa Fontaine was noted as the city engineer. I just want to correct that she's actually the city clerk. And then finally, what we added was a disruption script for advisory boards. Again, in case there is an individual or a large scale disruption. So these are just tools for you all to look at and use.
I had, sorry, I had a quick question on that one too. For the large scale disruption, earlier in the handbook, there was some dis- there was some direction about how to actually adjourn the meeting and that the board had to. But it, it's not reflected in that.
I feel like you've read my notes here. Wrote here on a note after a vote. So, yes.
Yeah, because I was actually going to question that too, because it's very clear. Presiding officer cannot just stop the meeting. It needs to, because it's a, it's a meeting of the commission, right?
And it does say that earlier in the document. It doesn't say it in the script.
Spot on. I wrote, I wrote a note here. Alyssa can attest to that.
I have a note now.
Spencer?
Where is the panic button? Said in there.
Right here.
Okay, that's a correction.
I don't want to carry it around my neck right now because I'm afraid I'm going to set it off. So it's right here.
Fair enough.
And this is something that we are having all of our advisory board staff liaisons have on them during meetings.
And where does that go?
When it's not with me.
No.
Who does it?
You hit that button.
I think it goes to the PD.
Okay.
Goes through to dispatch. Yeah.
Okay, so to TCOM.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a word on that. So we moved our office offices to the atrium. Now, it used to be our panic buttons up on the hill went to sheriff's office because the sheriff is right there. And the sheriff would respond, but simultaneously they would contact only PD because we're in the city limits. We had an incident a few weeks ago and, and we thought the button was going to TCOM. But only PD says they never got the signal. And somebody somewhere on along the lines got the idea that the sheriff needed to go. So the sheriff had to come all the way across town. Instead of a police officer, it was thirty seconds away. So you might want to double check and make sure that the path for that signal is going exactly where you want it to.
We have tested them, right? I thought we've.
We have tested them, but I think it's always a good thing to triple, triple check and confirm. So I appreciate passing that on.
Spencer?
On page thirty-three of the agenda packet, it also has previous members and the wrong date for the approval section, section thirteen. Just.
Yeah. And I will make a comment on that one. So that looks like that is the policies and procedures of the Planning Commission. And so we can certainly take these notes and work with the staff liaisons here and coming back to you all for an update. But thank you. I appreciate that other edit there. All right. Well, it looks like the questions for me are wrapped up, so I'm going to pass it off to the next portion of the presentation.
Thank you. While we get set up here, these windows. All right. Thank you, commissioners, again, for having us this evening. We are going to be covering our public meetings and public records. So what to expect with this presentation? Really, we're going to go over some general overviews, key definitions, and our compliance as members of advisory boards as well as staff supporting, and then offer some resources and best practices. All right. So in an effort to make government affairs more open, transparent, and accessible, the Open Public Meetings Act was passed by legislature in nineteen seventy-one. So this is the OPMA acronym that you will hear so frequently this evening. This is to allow public access, in most cases, full details to all phases of deliberation, policy formulation, and the decision-making process. All right. So the OPMA governs public meetings. And what is a meeting? So a meeting occurs when a quorum or a majority of a governing body gathers with the intent to conduct the body's business. Meetings do not have to be in person to be subject to the OPMA. Meetings could occur by telephone, email, or other electronic media, which is an important note to save for a couple of slides later on how we can make sure that we are not in violation of the OPMA. So you have a quorum, which then is a meeting. A quorum is a majority of the governing body. So I heard everybody kind of talking before we all started today. It was on all of our radars, just counting, making sure everybody was here. So thank you for that. Also, government bodies with voting and non-voting members, a quorum is actually the smallest number of people who have to be present for official decisions to be made by a vote. So if you don't have a quorum, what do we do? Obviously, here, when a quorum is present, you are able to hold the meeting. This is as published by the agenda and you notice is scheduled to the community, to the public, and to the body itself. You're able to take actions, which includes live streaming, recording minutes, staff preparation, and all of the support and features behind the scenes. If you don't have a quorum, we lose access to a lot of this. Most importantly, you cannot take action. So I'm going to come back to this yellow dot of holding the meeting because ultimately, if you don't have a quorum, there is no meeting to be held. And so you move forward with not being able to take action, which means that we are no longer able to livestream, record, or take the minutes as intended for that meeting. And if we, and I have some further slides, we're going to go over, you know, what does this look like and how to take the steps in order to address this if it were to occur. Losing a quorum. So you have a quorum, you start a meeting, but ultimately, later on down the road, you lose a quorum. Full stop, cannot take action. So making sure that that's addressed as closely as possible. Staff are here to support. We're monitoring remote participants as well. If anybody has to get up and remove themselves to take a break, recognizing is a quorum still present and what action can be taken. So ultimately, not being able to take action if you lose a quorum, but there is some other, more of these yellow dots of it kind of depends on that process and what that looks like. So we're going to cover that here in these next two slides. So when you don't have a quorum to start a meeting, this is where communication is very, very crucial and important. So communicating with staff if you know that you're going to be late, if you know that you cannot attend, or if you have to leave early. Communicating it upfront early, but obviously just as soon as possible when obviously emergencies occur. So prior to the meeting start time, confirming attendance both with remote and in person, that's something I think you, we all were monitoring and making sure that we had. If you do not have a quorum and it gets to your start time as published on the agenda, it is advised that you start the meeting. So you work with staff to be able to open that webinar, start the recording, and provide an announcement that we actually do not have a quorum. We are going to be waiting to see if we have a quorum. And then muting yourselves and staying on the meeting so that you can allow some additional time. Maybe somebody's just pulling up or they've communicated that they're running a few minutes late. If a quorum is confirmed, so somebody does log in remotely or that they come here in person, you're able to unmute yourself and then proceed with holding the meeting and just re-instating that what the start time is. What the start time is and um we now have a quorum and we will begin. If a quorum cannot be confirmed, uh that is ultimately you will want to unmute yourselves again and work with staff to announce that the meeting will not uh be held since a quorum is not present. And that the meeting um is going to be rescheduled for a future date. You cannot um approve the agenda or consent items or the minutes without that quorum, so just the meeting cannot be held, so making that announcement is key for anybody who. Was a part of the public, you know, tuning in as um it was noticed. And so I'm going to go back to this slide here, so starting not without a quorum. Um, holding the meeting as uh scheduled and published cannot occur. However, once that announcement is made and everything is um logged off, if there are members of the body here. That still wanted to receive information or have a discussion with staff, that is permitted. So what to do if you lose a quorum? So again, this is kind of where working with staff and just kind of monitoring um announcing the time that a quorum has been lost, and sometimes this is just more of a clarification of. Do we need to take a break? Has somebody stepped out? Are they coming right back? Um is there a technology uh component that um they just lost a signal and they're working on getting back into the meeting? Uh so making that known. Um if a quorum is been lost, action has to stop. Um and ultimately, if you do not expect to regain a quorum, you must adjourn the meeting. If a quorum is expected to return, it's best to probably provide a recess or a break so that everything can kind of pause, give um a moment. Um and then once the quorum is able to all be back together, you can proceed with the meeting.
So when you do that, you actually stop recording, correct? Oh, you keep recording, okay.
Keep recording.
Uh we just say we're going to resume in ten minutes or whatever.
The planning commission is looking to take a five-minute break, we will um reconvene at, you know, six-ten or shortly thereafter. And then you can mute, so that is something that the stream continues. Um, everybody is able to to step out, take a break and then um ultimately come back and then announce that, you know, we have returning from our break. For maybe any of those who, you know, popped in and didn't hear the first announcement and then uh just that mute key is is key. And then just another reminder of no action can be taken if a quorum is lost. Any other questions? So why is this important? So um as you all know, uh all elected and appointed officials must complete trainings under the OPMA within ninety days, which you all have done. Um, when assuming your duties here on the planning commission, a refresher course is required at least every four years. And it is our intent by being here this evening that all present members will have um that refresher course. It's stated in in on our records for you all.
Very nice.
Yes. And we also are not just here because we have to be. Um, education is one of our best investments to um. Reduce any risk of violations under the OPMA, so it's just good to touch on this and offer reminders and best practices. Liabilities, um. Under the OPMA, any action taken at a meeting held in violation is null and void. Uh. Additionally, any member of a governing body who attends a meeting knowingly violating the OPMA is subject to personal liability. Additionally, any person who prevails against the agency uh for a violation of the OPMA will be awarded all costs, including attorney fees, so it can be costly. And has great impacts um over and beyond just the body's work and individuals themselves. So compliance is a shared responsibility, so the clerk's office in connection with staff liaisons uh help ensure that meetings subject to the OPMA are. Adhering to all of the following requirements and additional ones behind the scenes. But um ultimately, our agendas need to be published by a certain timeframe, we are all working hard to get that information out to you all. In a timely manner, but also making sure that we are not in violation. Um confirming quorums, again, this is that communication piece, if you know that you are not going to be able to make it in advance. Um letting the staff liaisons know to the best of your ability, um as well as any unforeseen circumstances as soon as they come up. Meeting minutes, those are also required and so staff are here in person and as well as working after post-meeting to make sure that those are drafted and back to you all for approval. And then ultimately uh saved on our public meetings portal for um the official record and for the public to access. And then proper noticing, so if we know that. All of you are invited, you know, to uh another meeting and there's a potential for a quorum to arrive. We all work together on making sure that we are noticing that to the public so that there is no um opportunity for violation. Some additional resources, uh as mentioned, the public meetings portal, this is something that's, you know, new within the last year and that you all have been able to um. To access, but it's also available to the public. So all of the meetings uh future, past uh are available here on this page, here's our screenshot of the city's webpage, so the center icon will get you to our public meetings portal. And you can filter by the body um as well as the date and or conduct keyword searches. Uh after a meeting, uh the media recording is made available with additional bookmarks and everything um and any vote results for the public to to see. Staff liaisons, again, we're they're here for support and for resources, should you have any questions or you want help finding something, uh definitely reach out. The advisory board handbook, um as reviewed is, and we will continue to review, um this is also on our website and this will be the most current copy. So uh by going to this lower screenshot here, the government uh tab will open a menu and you can select advisory boards. Before um navigating further to any specific advisory board, the uh handbook is linked directly to that page. And will be updated with with all future updates as well, and that will be displayed on on it for the date. We're going to offer continued trainings, um so this evening and more, uh just making trainings more and more available so that the resources are there for um you all are able to access. And then if you have any questions, ask a clerk, we're here, we're happy to help. So how can you help? Um, we have it set up as designated staff members are distributing the informational documents for meetings to each member. Uh, this is a passive receipt of information is allowed, but a discussion of an issue when a majority. Um constitutes a meeting and it can violate, so these next two bullets are are key in preventing any. Um serial meetings as they are known and uh creating a violation of the OPMA. So we ask that you don't send an email to all or a majority of the governing body. Uh, we don't use reply all uh when the recipients are all or a majority. And this is why a lot of the communication are coming out from staff directly. Uh play it smart with travel arrangements. Um. Obviously, kind of, you know, sometimes you all need to get somewhere, but um having a majority in a car can run a risk of violating the OPMA. And again, um we cannot stress enough, advise the staff liaison and when appropriate, the chair, if you're unable to attend a meeting as soon as possible.
Spencer, yeah, so let's say um Children's Day is coming up, right? And what if we all end up there individually? Is there a proximity, even if we're not interacting?
Can't be within five hundred yards? No, nothing like that.
Yeah, just curious.
Um, so social events, we do not notice um for potential quorums, it's not, you're not conducting business. Um in areas, yes, you can all be somewhere, especially a social event, but it's you cannot be conducting business with a majority. Um and so that is is the key, and so making sure that just the optics too of that, so if you are all traveling in a vehicle, which is not. A public social event out in a park or um anything else is a lot more confined and deliberate than. Being at a children's event with many of the public and your families and everything else, so. Great question. Um, and back to this, if you're unable to attend a meeting as soon as possible, but uh letting the staff liaison know and uh potentially the chair, but maybe the chair is also not able to attend, so. Really, the staff liaison should be that primary contact, and it's um extends to running late, um experiencing uh computer connectivity issues and all of that. Okay, we've wrapped up open public meetings, any questions? Part two, everybody's favorite, we got Public Records Act.
Oh, boy.
I saw all of your eyes light up.
There we go. Nail on the head.
I I will just say, um with our last new ad hoc board, we had to watch about a forty-eight minute video. And so um Alyssa's is much more succinct.
That's good, very good.
We can always turn on the.
Well, we're doing it like that. Yes, thank you. All right, so diving into the Public Records Act, um as a lot of you already know, uh Public Records Act requires that all public records are available to the public. Um with very narrowly construed um exceptions. So how does that all tie into this? Um, public records are defined as any writing that's prepared, owned, used or retained by a state or local agency. And acting in your capacity here on the planning commission, you are a part of this. So um you're creating public records, you are receiving public records, you are doing great work, but it goes over and beyond just any writing, so just kind of highlighting. All of the technology available to us today. Um, it's pretty expansive, so we're going to kind of dive into that, but text messages included. Um, this is something where making sure we don't have group chats with all of the planning commissioners or anything that you send to staff liaisons of. You know, running late, we do have those captured and those are public records. So electronic versus physical records, um as mentioned, any communication and documents created, received or used as part of your duties. Uh relating to the advisory board may be considered a public record. And there really is no distinction regarding whether or not the record was created or stored on a personal device or account. Being on the planning commission, you all have planning commission iPads, I think city-issued iPads as well as city-issued email accounts, so this is really. An effort to truly separate and give you a platform to conduct the work in which that you're doing. And doing so so that we can uh remain in compliance to the best degree possible for any disclosure requests. So state and local agencies are required to retain records for different lengths of time depending on the content, function and purpose. Uh so we have two um statutes that really kind of drive us home and it's the act of preservation and destruction. Um is governed by one, but then also the availability and disclosure is by another, so we really have to make sure that we're in alignment for both. Requests for public records can actually be made formally or informally to any employee or elected official. Having city-issued email addresses, um this kind of opens it up for potentially you may be receiving one. Um as a planning commissioner, so it is crucial that uh any requests for agency records be forwarded to disclosure staff, so giving it to staff liaisons, but. Definitely in the city clerk's office if you can as soon as possible, we have some very strict time deadlines. Um in in the statutes in which we must per um provide a response. And so um making sure that those email accounts are being managed, um checked frequently. And then if you're not sure, forward it and ask the question, so I know sometimes a lot of time questions can be asked or um. You're not quite sure if it's a true request for public records, that's what we're here for and forward it on. Uh, as highlighted, uh the city may provide advisory board members with official city email addresses, which you all have, as well as um some city-issued technology. These email accounts may not be used for personal communication, so this is strictly just planning commissioner um roles and function. Um, all of our email accounts uh issued by the city are captured and retained for the city's policies and any legal requirements, so I know I've talked a little bit about. Destruction and preservation, uh manage those accounts how you see fit, if you delete a spam, if you. Don't need the informational e- email anymore and you delete it, that is okay, we have it captured our our servers and it is uh recoverable. Uh so definitely something that you are able to do there in the capacity of your city-issued email accounts. All right, we can go over the staff, so the city clerk is the official public records for the agency, uh but we have staff throughout city hall, police department and joint animal services that um. Are designated as official disclosure staff. So checking with your staff liaisons um or the clerk's office, if you have any questions or concerns, includes creating records um as well as anything else that might come up. And then how can you help? So be mindful in creating records, um this includes taking notes. Uh making sure anything written and collected, ultimately, it if it still exists and it is requested, it it may be subject to the Public Records Act. Um, only using city technology in accordance with policies and all legal requirements. Uh. Don't delete records created in your official capacity without checking with staff first, kind of, this is beyond the email account uh example I just provided. And then don't retain uh records created in your official capacity once transferred to staff liaison, so um in an example, if. Uh you all had a scoring rubrics for um a presentation that you were receiving and then you ultimately transferred those over to Ryan and Erin. Um you no longer have to retain your copy once confirmed they have it, so that way you're not creating a duplicate. Instance of it and it's not being stored somewhere that we're not actually tracking. And then again, checking city-issued email accounts frequently and using automated replies for when you expect to have a prolonged absence. And sometimes just an automatic uh reply for your planning commissioner accounts is not a terrible idea, it's, you know, thank you for reaching out to your uh your planning commission. If you have any questions about meetings or staff, you know, then direct them back to staff who are in our emails all day, every day. And and that can be a best practice to use so that you don't have to feel like you you're in there every day. Any questions? Includes my part of this, we have more.
Yeah, Spencer, go ahead.
What do you, what constitutes informal request for public records? What what's an example of that?
It essentially does not need to be, I don't need to put my request as a member of the public on a form submitted to a specific person. Through a specific platform, um so it's not governed in that way, we do provide a recommendation and the city does use public records uh software that we invite. Members of the community to submit their public records, but ultimately, we can receive a phone call, they can come in to city hall. Talk to us over at the counter and say, I would like to see a copy of, um and that starts our clock. So that's the informal part, meaning it's can come in many different ways and we can't mandate that it be submitted one way.
Got it, so if a member of the public runs into me and asks me for a record, I have to what, then alert you to that? Okay.
More or less, yes, if you were at Costco on Saturday and said like, there's questions on when the clock probably truly starts, but um again, just get it to staff as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and.
Good question.
The initial response has to be made within five days by business days. And that initial response is usually, thank you, we received your request, we anticipate responding with documents by September twenty-fifth.
We have our our new trainer.
So when I was in the assessor's office, I was the PRO.
Oh, see, well, and yeah.
Yeah, and.
And you know I left a lot out there, too.
I was going to actually ask you to please touch on serial meetings with the open public meetings, because that's something a lot of people don't understand.
Okay, and yeah, we can definitely um include that more in in slides and for the future, but yes, to that point. For the serial meetings that kind of tying back to that reply all or creating an instance where you have a majority. Of the body and um discussions are happening and that is a violation of the OPMA, so that's why we say. Please don't reply all, please don't reach out to everybody, no group chats. Um, and you know, to avoid creating a serial meeting and ultimately uh a violation of the OPMA.
So actually, what I was referring to, so Judith goes to Spencer.
Hmm.
And says, hey, what do you think of this? And then she goes to Elliot and says, hey, what do you think of this? And then she goes to Eddie, that becomes.
It's not like a real troublemaker.
Understood, and yes, to that point as well, that is something to, you know. Be uh mindful of not doing, um just to avoid creating any kind of, you know, that serial. Through the entire body of um planning commissioner advisory board. Does Paul have something to add?
Just a quick thing.
Yes, please.
It doesn't just have to be someone polling all the other people.
Correct.
It's one of you could be communicating with one of you, and then in the reply, you decide to copy somebody else in.
Uh right, right, yes.
And that person copies another person, and it's the moment when that it's a quorum of people that you're in jeopardy.
Yep.
Thank you, yep, lots of really good examples of bad examples, so.
Yeah, because that's.
Don't do those.
Honestly, that's the trap that most people could end up falling into.
Unintentionally, absolutely, we're conducting business and, you know, just trying to share information, so it's unintentional, but that is why, yes, education. And touching on all this and having these conversations, so thank you for bringing that up.
I I'd make one recommendation to you, uh obviously you all have iPads, which is great, because I think that eliminated a lot of the issues that we would have in the past with people using private emails and. You know, having to search them and those kinds of things, but um what I would say is you don't have to fully communicate through email or through your iPad with the staff. If there's something that maybe you have a question on that you're like, hey, I don't want to create a public record on this, like for whatever reason, it may be sensitive, um just give me a call, right? So um those calls are not, those are not public records. So um those calls are not, those are not public records. So you know, not that we want to, you know, circumvent the the public records act, but if you've got something that you're like, hey, you know, this is sensitive, I don't wanna, I don't wanna create a record on, just let me know. Um, give me a call and we can talk about it.
It's a great point, thank you.
But voicemails are a public record.
They are.
So anything say, like, again, if it's saved and retained and, you know, we still have it, um it hasn't met retention, we cannot destroy it. And there's a request, they they are subject. But being mindful of creating records, um we say this a lot just for anybody. You don't need to put the full details of the appointment you're going to on your calendar, just put appointment um and not adding additional details if you're not comfortable um should they be requested or being reviewed even. Uh, so that's a great point, but phone calls are great.
Thank you for this. So are we gonna get email certificates for this?
Would you like an email certificate?
I would love one because I need it for my other duties.
Understood.
I'm not due, but now I don't have to do it for another four years.
Okay, no, we we will take care of it and um I will connect with with Erin and make sure that everybody here um present tonight. We will have some updated uh certificates for you all.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate you all being here, it's always nice to have guests, so thank you very, very much.
And I
I will say, I know we're passing this on and maybe that's a good opportunity to do that and I can fill up some time while the uh mouse is making its way is we are going to all of our major advisory boards and providing them the same information. This isn't something because the planning commission did anything. We're trying to get out information on the changes and updates and just provide a good platform for making sure all of our trainings are in line and then giving some best practices. It should already be up.
Okay. Yeah, so if you share the screen, the blue square, one sec, if you get out of that. Oh. So that green share on Zoom, and I apologize, so don't click that yet. Sorry, green share. There we go. And that's gonna ultimately make sure our remote attendees and the public can see what we are.
This is also serving as a team building exercise. Great communication.
Navigate the PowerPoint with a blindfold on.
Uh, we're gonna actually I'm gonna sneak down here and help. All of our slides look and feel very similar. Yes. Yeah. Right, that's my eyes, you were right. Okay, is this one right?
We have recital to pro tips.
Perfect. I just saw the same. So. You are good, so. Oh.
Yes.
Move the mouse, it'll it'll go away.
All right, so that's my cue, isn't it? Good evening, commissioners. So again, my name is Paul White and this is Brandy Legamina, and we are your deputy city clerks. Um, tonight, we're going to be giving a high level intro into Robert's Rules of Order uh and providing some pro tips to help you uh get the most out of your meetings. So I hope you all brought your copies of Robert's Rules of Order with you so that you can follow along. Tonight, we will go over all eight hundred and sixteen pages and we are super excited to have an in-depth conversation about why we love it and how it applies in my mute. Hail, you seem to be relaxed. Uh, yeah, no, I'm just kidding, it's gonna be about fifteen minutes.
Pops.
Yeah. Essentially, um and and if you're a registered parliamentarian, I apologize in advance for all of this. So essentially, Robert's is a system of conducting group meetings um clearly, fairly, and efficiently. Our goal tonight is to reduce any intimidating, bothersome, or bureaucratic notions uh that you may have about Roberts so that you can face any situations that come up clearly and calmly. So let's start with what Robert's rules are intended for and go over some basic principles. Robert's rules is a system used so that everyone has a chance to be heard. We all know what we're agreeing to and nobody wastes everyone's time. So tonight, we're gonna go over each of these topics um one at a time. So we take things one at a, we take things in meetings one at a time. We take one subject at a time and we speak one at a time. Uh, we use motions to take action and motions need a second. We give every topic full consideration in the form of full and free discussion. We speak and act cour- with courtesy and professionalism. And when it's to si- uh time to decide, we vote, um acting in a way that protects everyone's rights. So there are different rights within this group of people. Um, the majority, for example, has a right to make a decision by a vote. In other words, you don't have to a hundred percent agree on everything in order to, for the majority to act. Okay, that's what you, that's what voting and having a majority of vote is all about. Um, your minority, well, has a right to. For example, they have a right to be part of the decision-making. That's why you have to have a quorum present when you conduct your business. Uh, the right of each member uh is, uh for example, is to have the rules followed. And that's where things like points of order come up. So those are all examples of those things. Again, with the quorum, so to call a meeting or to order, there must be a quorum, as you've heard. No action can be taken without one. And unfortunately, if there aren't enough members present in person or remotely, the meeting cannot take place and it will need to be rescheduled. Uh, it's um, of course, you've already been reminded and I'll say again that there are, you know, countless hours have been put into prep for the meetings. Weeks and months have gone into preparing presentations. There may be presenters from outside organizations. And um uh, let's see, and there of course is the consideration of the public's right to be informed.
I mean.
Um, so it's it's time wasted when there's an unexpected lack of quorum. Uh. Right. So and somehow, if you manage to lose your quorum during the meeting, which is very careless, by the way, uh know that the meeting has to adjourn and no further actions can be taken. We went ahead and highlighted on this little chart for you, since you're a nine-member board, so special that way, that means five people.
So we have some pro tips. Um, as we know, there's a, there's traffic, things always go wrong when you're in a hurry. Um, you might be running late for a meeting. Reach out to your staff liaison, let us know that you're on your way. Uh, if we know that you are coming, we can make that announcement that we're waiting for a quorum and we'll be starting the meeting shortly. Um, let us know. Uh, that is gonna be the biggest takeaway is to communicate with your staff liaison.
Right. A motion is how you go about doing something as a group. Now, we know that um a lot of the time that you spend is spent talking about things, not necessarily doing things. Um, and that when the way that we speak, when we're following parliamentary procedure, isn't really conversational. So sometimes people are a little put off by the by the structure of that parliamentary speak. Um, but I want to make sure that you understand, none of what we have to say about motions is meant to alter in any way how you all uh as a group have respectful, meaningful conversations about things. Um, this is all about making the decision to finally do something. Um, once the facts and opinions are all laid out and how to best accomplish that. So with a motion, you want to present a motion as um a positive statement. Like in our example, I move to have ice cream on Mondays. Um, rather than a negating statement, um, uh, as we have here, I move to not have ice cream on Mondays, so don't do that. Okay, make a positive statement to do a thing. Um, once a motion is seconded, that indicates that the proposal can be considered and discussed. Now, if a motion doesn't get a second, it doesn't get discussed. One person can have a great idea, but if the rest, the other six or or eight um already know that they don't want to go there um and so therefore there's no second, the group doesn't have to spend its time on that. That's part of the efficiency, that's part of of Roberts preventing one person from wasting everyone's time. Okay, not that it's a bad idea, but if nobody else is gonna step up, then there's no point in continuing on that. So do us a favor, though. Um, there's a thing you've heard plenty of times that isn't really a thing. The motion dies for a lack of a second. Um, so there wasn't a second, so that motion was never alive, so we couldn't die. Okay, the chair just moves on to the next thing. Uh, there are many kinds of motions. Uh, the ones that are most relevant to our meetings include main motions like the ice cream example, um amendments, points of order.
So we have a pro tip on how to make a motion. A good motion is a statement that begs a question with a yes or a no answer. So we have the motion, I move to have ice cream on Mondays, not I move to have ice cream or spinach on Mondays, Tuesdays, or Fridays. Don't do that. Um, one thing to help you is to have your motion written down ahead of time. And finally, keep it as simple as you can without changing its meaning. For example, you can say, I move to recommend the staff report to the city council as presented.
Sometimes the main motion is pretty good, but it just needs a little something. Um, amendments, um remind, remember, amendments aren't insults. They're just alternatives. Okay, we don't need to call them friendly because that implies that the other amendments were not friendly. Um, they do require a second. And uh an amendment is its own motion that gets its own vote. And that will, we'll hit that in a moment when we go back to the pro tip. Um, so I move to amend the motion to say whatever, such as this example, I move to amend the motion to read strawberry ice cream. Um, it doesn't mean, well, having ice cream on, you know, on Mondays is the dumbest thing I ever heard. It just means, would it be better if? And you all are are used to more of this formality probably than some of our other boards. But a lot of our boards, because they are s- more informal, it's important to to remind them that people aren't trying to fight with each other by doing these things.
So a pro tip here for our chair is that the amendment isn't the main motion. Remember to go back and finish the vote on the main motion.
Point of order should be rare, um but they are a common type of motion. They are a particular kind of motion that does not need a second. It's one of those rights of the individual, so you don't have to get a second for that. Um, it has certain characteristics. A point of order legitimately interrupts the flow of the meeting. Once someone says, point of order, we pause, hit the pause button. Uh, it must be raised as soon as whatever the error is occurs. You don't like wait until the end of the meeting or something. It might be too late to go back and fix whatever it is you think is, has gone amiss. Uh, and the chair must resolve the point. And so the chair has to essentially rule on whether or not the member's point is well taken or not well taken. And if the chair gets it wrong, the group can disagree with the chair's decision and by vote, decide whether or not the chair was correct in that making that decision. We hope it uh almost never gets to that for you.
Yeah, I'm seeing note taking, is it possible to get these slides emailed to us as a group?
They are, um, well, are they attached already to?
They are not in our agenda packet.
Not in the packet, but we can't email them. Yeah, we can email, but we also upload these to the meeting uh profile for tonight's meeting so that ultimately if the the public wanted to access them as well, it's just a a downloadable link. So we will definitely make sure everybody has access more than one way.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So raising a point of order shouldn't be an argumentative activity. It just means, hey, I think we did that the wrong way. Uh, like the example here, um, the member might say, point of order, the chair failed to call for the nays. And the chair might respond, well, actually, I I did request the nays, so the point is not well taken. But but would the member like to request the vote to be retaken? Right, so there being, you you're assuming good intent and we're taking a solution-oriented approach. Okay? Um, but so let's say the chair had failed to call for the days. In this case, you could, you could just say, oh, the point is well taken, uh are there any nays? Because presumably, this is happening right at the time of the vote. In this example.
So in this pro tip for the chair, I think it's weird, it's okay to take a break. Uh, it's okay for the chair to state that they would like to consult with staff over the member's point and take a five-minute break. It's a great opportunity for everything to kind of slow down a little bit.
Sure. So some some points of order are more complicated than others. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it can be discussed among the board. Uh, Robert's rules offers some structure for discussion that helps keep discussion clear and orderly. Roberts indicates that the member making the motion has the first opportunity to speak first um in discussion. And from that point, it's the presiding officer's job to give each member an opportunity to speak at least once before anyone else speaks again. Um, and uh and yes, the presiding officer must recognize all the members who wish to speak. So um, this is really the meat and potatoes of determining the action the board is going to vote on. And the important thing to remember is to be courteous and professional. Uh, all board members have the opportunity to express their thoughts, however, i- it should be orderly and one at a time. We don't wanna, you know, we don't want to
Become
Create extra chaos by by saying things that are inappropriate or by talking over each other.
So another pro tip here for our chair uh is to use a a checklist of all your board members and you solicit those comments in around Robin's style. Uh, members do have the opportunity to pass, but that way you've given the opportunity for everyone uh to speak. And that is a Robin on top of our Lucy, around Robin.
All right. While debate is a healthy way for boards to determine the best action uh moving forward, uh it's vital that discussions stay on point uh to the point of the subject being debated. There is no room for remarks that do not pertain to the debate. And by that, we mean these things, personal remarks, insulting language, personal attacks, profanity and other forms of vulgarity, or inflammatory remarks. Even if they're saying them in Congress, we we don't want to do that here. Um, and I do need to point out that during their three minutes of access to you to give you their opinions, the public is not bound by these same rules of decorum.
So a pro tip here, when we're especially right after debate, is if it's getting hot, direct your comments to the chair. By speaking in a third person and directing your comments to the chair, while it may sound formal or awkward, it is a really good way to avoid argumentative statements.
Once a topic has been thoroughly discussed, the board can now call for the vote. For there to be action, the win must be by a majority. There are times when a member may have conflict of interest on the item being discussed. What is a conflict of interest, you may ask? Well, a conflict of interest is any situation in which financial or other personal considerations may unduly influence the member's judgment. And I know that you, because you were all on the planning commission, that this is well-marked territory. Um, but it it begs to be said. Um, so if you believe that you may have a conflict of interest, you want to discuss that conflict with uh your staff liaison immediately. And well, certainly uh before the meeting starts in which the conversation is going to happen. And you want to refrain from participating in the discussion and voting process.
So a pro tip, chair, remember that you're part of the uh, you're part of the board as well and to vote. Um, remember to ask for all the nays, even if there aren't any, and declare that outcome that the motion carries. Uh, if a consensus is obvious, use this little magic. If there's no ob, if there's no objection, please show the motion adopted and pause. If somebody wants the yays and nays, they will tell you.
I just, sorry to interrupt, but for a second, getting back to the conflict of interest, um, section there, I think it, it's rare in terms of the planning commission having a conflict of interest, but it could happen. Um, you know, if there's a financial interest in a piece of property, for example, that maybe the planning commission is, is reviewing for some rezoning or something like that, 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 that certainly, I think, would qualify, and that would be something that would be pretty common. Like Paul said, you wanna make sure that you, you, you know, let us know as soon as possible. Chances are, if there's even the remote possibility of a conflict of interest, then probably our recommendation is going to be actually stepping out of the room and not participating in that at all. And then, so once that agenda, so you're not even in the room for the agenda item, because even the perception of you being in the room um, could be a, a perceived conflict of interest if you're, if you're in the room. So we take you outside of the room, probably set you somewhere else, and then after that agenda item was over, we bring you back. So just FYI, that's how that procedure would work. If you think there's any remote possibility of there being a conflict of interest, let us know, and we can help manage that process.
Ryan, thank you for that. And, and I don't, I can't remember the name of it right now, but there is a scientific principle about how the observer affects the experiment. Yes, so just staying in the room can affect how free, uh, your other board members feel about discussing, discussing the item.
Yep.
Right? Um, again, regarding remote attendance, you know, inform staff, if you're going to, uh, join remotely, we've got, uh, commissioners, um, McMichael and Moore are attending remotely tonight, I see. And remember to use the raise hand feature. Uh, turn on your audio and video, at least when voting.
But a pro tip would be to keep your video on throughout the entire meeting. Uh, the chair and the public will see that you're present and participating. One reason why, the only reason we would not turn on our video is if there were some technical difficulties, but it's important to hold that accountability to keep your camera on, to show that you're active.
Okay, so, uh, a few, just sort of miscellaneous additional tips that we wanted to share with you. You know, sometimes, uh, with all the, the subject matter that you're going through, it can be a little, um, daunting to smoothly navigate through a meeting, so a meeting script can be a resource. And if you feel like you need a few prompts that way, you know, approach us, and we can, um, we can see what we can do to accommodate that in the clerk's office. Um, when you will have a roll call, I was very pleased to see, uh, during, um, your voting earlier today, how many people actually physically raised their hands, um, as well as saying yay, um, and so on. So calling out the names at the start of the meeting, um, does provide some transparency and accountability. Yeah. But also, you know, during roll calls to, it helps us to, because we're all the way over there when we're recording these things usually. Um, this, this, you've got your, your clerk is sitting right there at the table with you, but sometimes it's harder for us with other advisory boards. Uh, and then, um, you know, meetings can get long, especially your meetings, I would imagine. And so if you need it, members can request a few minutes of a recess. I'm just gonna add one other thing, because, because Ryan brought up that part about the conflict of interest, um, and the recusal. Um, imagine what happens if you're right at quorum, but one of you has a conflict of interest. That, how that affects now your ability to fully vet and discuss that item. Yeah, so, so with that, um.
Are there any questions? Are there any, uh, sticky situations you guys have experienced that you'd like to talk about?
I do have, there is a little subtlety in the amendments clause on motions. And then, I make the motion. I, I make a motion, we have ice cream on Mondays, Spencer seconds. And in the course of discussion, somebody says, well, you know, a lot of federal holidays are on Mondays. If I say, I change my amendment to having ice cream on Mondays that are not federal holidays, if Spencer retains his second, that does not require a separate vote.
Here's what I would say to you about that. Once that motion has been made and seconded, it no longer belongs to you or Spencer.
True.
It now belongs to the entire board. And so you don't, you can't give permission for that amendment, but the board can. If there's no objection, can we change the amendment to Wednesdays?
There's a lot in that eight hundred and sixteen. Kirian, you've got your hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I was just curious, because in other meeting spaces where it's been more formal, um, I, I don't know how far we're going. Uh, would you like us to say like, oh, I, a point of information to seek clarification, or can we just raise our hand, or if we're uncomfortable, can we say like, uh, point of personal privilege? Where exactly do we draw the lines with using Roberts' rules in this setting? Or is it just as you stated, that those are the only ones that we should really be adhering to?
So we don't want to modify your, the culture of how you have conversations. Okay? Um, and, um, but we want to be clear. So I think there's a lot of, uh, a, a lot of flexibility with what the things you're describing. So for example, one reason that I might raise a point of personal privilege is I can't see the presentation slides from way back here at the end of the table. That's an example of a personal privilege. And so I, I don't think that you have to formalize that, if that's not normally what you would do. I think you could just get, once the chair, you know, you get the chair's attention and he recognizes you, then you say, well, um, chair, I'm, I'm having trouble reading these slides. Can, you know, maybe we can rearrange seats or something like this. Um, but, you know, if, um, if we just finished a vote and you realize that you thought you were voting for the opposite thing, and so you voted op, the opposite way, then it needs to be, um, well, in that case, that would be, um, a call for, uh, well, you would start with a point of order.
Yes.
We start with a point of order to get the chair's attention. That stops the meeting, and now we can fix, we can proceed to fix whatever the problem is.
It needs to be before you go on to the next.
In that particular example, it does have to happen before you go on to the next item, so that you can just fix it without having to go through some other hoops.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I think, you know, to start off, just to circle back to the, the responses, we're just providing, we're providing tools. We wanna help best practices to have good, meaningful, efficient meetings. And we're always here too. Again, if something does come up and you wanna chat about a particular item, um, the clerks are experts in this, and so I know they're always really excited to be able to provide some information on these topics.
That's true. Yep. And, and then, to your point about not wanting to break the culture, that's even stated in, in the book there, that, that this is, it's just a good civil way to conduct business. It's not meant to change the culture of the group that is conducting meetings.
So we as staff have kind of, um, you know, talked a little bit internally about ways that we can kind of improve things, especially given that we've got some new, um, public comment procedures and, um, you know, some other things going on. And so I think between now and our next meeting, we plan to, to meet with Jeff as the chair to kind of go over some of our ideas and, and, um, some of those things are, you know, around the public, new public comment procedures, but also utilizing a true clerk of the planning commission. So Aaron's role a little bit would, would be, you know, as the, as the clerk. Right now, it's a little bit of a, I'll say a hybrid between, you know, myself and Aaron, and so, you know, part of it is too, is that I would not like to be at every planning commission meeting ever, so, um, you know, having the ability to have a clerk allows me to do that. So bring me with Jeff and go over some of these things, I think, you know, procedurally and, and those kinds of things. We don't wanna necessarily change what you guys have been doing with it. You know, it's even written in the planning commission's rules of procedure that, you know, this is to be, we're to be fairly informal in our discussions, and so we don't wanna change that. We know there's a lot of benefit in that. We don't wanna, we don't wanna change that. But there are some, you know, formalities as far as the, the public hearings and the making of motions and the voting and those kinds of things, that we just wanna make sure that we're kind of, you know, locking down a little bit, so we're a little bit more, um, formal when it comes to those kinds of things.
Eddie.
So yeah, Ryan, I just kind of piggyback on that. I think one of the things, and the way I under, have always understood Roberts' rules is the main thing is like, there's always a motion, right? We're always supposed to be talking about a motion. Or there's no discussion, and that's not really the way we operate. We, we get the staff report, we, we talk about it, we do all this stuff. And then someone says, let's, we move to approve it as presented, and we're done. Occasionally, we might have some discussion about modifying what we wanna do, but for the most part, we're never, there's no motion until we're ready to do something.
And that's okay, because Roberts' rules does allow for small committees to have discussions prior to the motions. Um, that's completely okay.
So we get, we're not breaking Roberts when you do it.
Right. Most of the groups that I have been involved with operate that way, especially at the informal. You know, when I was on city council, it was a lot more strict. Uh, but most of the other groups that I've been involved with do that. And usually, like it, what the chair does, what I, I do is, once the motion's been made, then you just ask, is there further discussion? Right, yeah. Well, I thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, you actually made this somewhat entertaining, which I appreciate.
What about the joy level?
Their joy level is.
No, no, both are close. We got to not have time.
We always love to have visitors, and for, to have distinguished visitors is even more of an honor, so thank you very much. Uh, our next meeting is the twenty-fifth of September, two weeks from now. And, uh, I wish you all a good evening, and thank you. I'm, we're adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Big X button, that'll take care of it.
Upon a right.